Good evening. It is November 2, 2021. This is the City of Everett, Washington Planning Commission Meeting. Welcome, everyone. We will call this meeting to order, and I'll ask Kathy to do a roll call, please.
Thank you. Chair Yanisak?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Lavra?
Here.
Commissioner McGinn?
Here.
Commissioner Finch?
Here.
Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. As usual, I will open with some general instructions. Our planning commission meetings do remain remote for the time being. If you are accessing this meeting via phone, please be aware that there is about a 10-second delay on the broadcast and stream. If you wish to download the presentation materials or wish to comment and need to see the visual in real time, please visit everettwa.gov/PlanningCommission. I would like to remind anyone participating to please mute your microphone, or if you are calling in, to mute your phone by pressing *6 until called upon. Thank you for your patience, and stay tuned for more information about bringing the planning commission back to in-person meetings. With that, I'll ask commissioners if everyone has had a chance to review the minutes from the October 19 meeting, and if there are any requests for changes or additions. Hearing none, how about a motion to approve?
This is Commissioner McGinn. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Finch, thank you. Please, Kathy, could you do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Yanisak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move forward, do we have any commissioners who have anything they'd like to report or share with the group? Okay, let's move right into staff comments then. Yorick?
Thank you, Chair Yanisak. We have a short agenda tonight. I know there's a few commissioners have places to be, and I've also heard, more importantly, that I have pizza at home, so I will keep my staff comments brief. First thing I'll mention is that we will need to wait a little bit longer to implement the goal that I had of cameras on planning commission meetings while we wait for in-person meetings to come back, the gold standard of a good planning commission meeting. I am working with IT still to understand what impediments there may be on our end, and more importantly, I haven't had the chance to connect with all of you yet either. I think it's important that all commissioners have the same ability to participate, so for another meeting, we'll work with the status quo that we have been working with for several months or many months now. In recent planning commission items, the council will pick up the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Package, beginning tomorrow evening with a briefing. Thank you all again for your hard work on that. As I was reviewing my notes on that before this meeting, I realized that I had said I would prepare a memo that showed what changes were made between the recommendation that the planning commission made and the materials that were forwarded to the council for their consideration. There were a few lightly substantive or non-substantive changes, but nevertheless, I think it's important for the integrity of the information that you know what has changed after you have completed your recommendation. Kathy will, if she hasn't yet, will send out that memo soon, and you can review it at your leisure or not. It's mainly for the record. And again, nothing was very substantive in those changes that went to the council. So we'll see how the council feels about the recommendations, and thank you again for your work on that. I have mentioned a few times that we were applying to a grant, applying for a grant through the Department of Commerce for a housing action plan implementation, and we were successful at that. Many thanks to Becky for preparing an excellent grant application. The grant work will, the grant will support a scope of work that'll look at the city's housing development incentives, things like multifamily tax exemption and density bonuses and fee waivers, and we'll make sure that all of those are dialed into the right level to achieve the most benefit while supporting the most housing development. Next steps, our staff will work with Commerce to refine the scope of work and then work on identifying some consultant support for that work. Last week, I co-presented proposed growth targets for all of the cities and planning areas within St. Homish County to the St. Homish County Steering Committee. That's the group of elected officials from the county, the cities within it, and two little tribes. There were a few questions about actions that Everett is planning to take to advance missing middle housing in areas of the city, and otherwise, a lot of information thrown at the members of that committee. After taking some time to digest it, the steering committee will be asked to make a recommendation to the county council at their next meeting on December 1, and the county council is the final authority on growth targets. And in planning commission meeting scheduling news, we reviewed our work program and the materials that we expect to have ready for you, and would like to propose canceling November 16 and December 21. So that's the second meeting of each of this month and next month. Normally, we would wait to see if materials bubbled up, but I know there's sometimes travel plans and things like that, so we wanted to give you some advance notice. If there's any thoughts about that or concerns, please let me know tonight. Otherwise, we can go ahead and send out a cancellation notice for November 16 and December 21. We would hold a December 7 meeting, and I would ask that in return, we do plan on a normal meeting with full attendance on January 4, because we do have significant work program, and that'll give us some time to catch up. As always, happy to take any questions from the commission. Otherwise, we can move on with the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Yorick. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Well, we do have one agenda item tonight, and before we move into that, I would want to inquire and see if there are any attendees tonight who were wishing to address the planning commission on any items that are not on the agenda. So if you were here and wanting to speak about something other than the amendments to the setback provisions that we are addressing, now would be the time to do that. And I don't think we have huge crowds, so if you are here wanting to speak about something, just go ahead and unmute yourself, and we can get to you. All right, great. With that, then, I think we will move into our agenda items, number six, the amendments to setback provisions, and this is a public hearing. So I will, we will open the public hearing and begin with a presentation from Becky.
Great. Thank you, Chair Yanisak, and good evening, planning commissioners. I'm going to share my screen here. Let's see. Let me, it's not bringing this up. Thread again. Hey, get this. Okay, can you all see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great. You just never know. Well, good evening, and a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm going to be presenting the code amendments that were briefed last meeting, and we're referring to these, there'll be a number of these coming through the planning commission. We are labeling these our rethink zoning refinements. As you well know, the rethink zoning project was a complete rewrite of the city's development regulations and were adopted in November of 2020. Since last year, staff's been reviewing, working with, and applying these updated regulations to project applications. And we've compiled a list of refinements that would clarify ambiguous provisions or correct an unintended outcome of a new or modified code provision. So this first set of amendments for consideration address Chapter 1906 of the Everett Municipal Code, and that's related to setbacks, lot setbacks and residential densities. So just as a matter of record, this is the procedural elements that we've completed. The SEPA was issued on October 18 with a public, or a comment end date of today. We did not receive any specific SEPA comments. We did also notice this public hearing, and as required, we sent our development regulations to the state for their review. Their review will be completed in December prior to council's final action on these amendments. As you recall, the planning commission was briefed on October 19. And then, as a matter of procedure as well, any code amendment that we bring through to the planning commission and council must meet the criteria set forth in the Everett Municipal Code, and that means that the proposed amendments need to be consistent with the applicable provisions of the comp plan. The proposed amendments need to bear a substantial relationship to public health, safety, and welfare, and the proposed amendments promote the best long-term interests of the Everett community. And we, in our analysis, find that these amendments do meet that criteria. We had brought forward three specific amendments last week, and I'm going to go through them, except for, I want to let the commission know that we've tabled the proposed amendment to the 1906-030, and that was related to exceptions to building structure placement or setbacks. And you might recall, we had somewhat of a conversation, and we feel that we need additional time to evaluate the proposal, do some more analysis before we bring that forward. So that has been tabled, and you will not see that here tonight. So the First Amendment falls into that category of clarification. We wanted to point the folks that are looking to develop on lots that are less than 5,000 square foot, and then single-family zones, get directed to the place where those provisions, special provisions would be in place. And I'm fighting a little bit of a cold. The Second Amendment has to do with, I need just a moment.
This always happens at a difficult time. I know for me, sometimes it's a quiet office with half of the folks remote. I may not have spoken in several hours until these meetings start, and so all of a sudden, my voice has got to wake up, so.
All right, I think I got it. Apologize for that. So the next one has to do with an interior side yard setback, specifically related to the UR4 zone. This slide shows you what was in place in Metro Everett prior to rethink zoning adoption. And as you can see, on the first floor, there was a zero-feet interior side yard setback. And then this map showing the boundaries of Metro Everett. So we think this is important and understand that there have been some projects that were in development when rethink zoning was approved. And so in the consolidation of zones and bulk regulations, the UR4 zone ended up with a five-foot interior setback. Yorick, could you go forward with this? My apologies.
Yeah, sure thing. Just reading through here. Can you advance the slide? I can pick up where we're at here. Okay, so we had, were you finished with this slide? I think so.
Yeah, just restoring.
Yeah, restores the pre-rethink zoning standard. Again, we think that that change was made by rethink zoning in errors, so this restores it back to the zero-foot side setback interior that had been there before. We had a question at the last planning commission meeting about historic overlays and how the zero-foot interior side setback would impact historic districts. There is a small portion of the Riverside historic overlay within the Metro Everett boundary, and there are also UR4-zoned areas in the Metro Everett boundaries adjacent to that historic overlay, as well as a couple of others that consist of both multifamily and single-family zoning. The majority of the adjacencies are separated by a street or an alley, and in those cases, development would most likely apply front and rear setbacks next to the historic overlay properties, but not an interior side setback. And again, a reminder that that zero-interior-side lot setback was in place prior to rethink zoning, so this is just restoring that setback.
One other thing I would add, if I can get it out here. We did receive a comment letter prior to this hearing, which I believe the commissioners have received a copy, as well as we just received a comment via email that I believe Kathy has distributed in support of the amendments. Thank you.
That's great. And again, thank you for the planning commissions for your questions. At the last month, we did realize with the mechanical equipment and the setbacks in the screenings, we went back and circled back with our land use team and did not feel that we had all the information that we needed to move forward. We did want to move forward with the side setback, and so we'll hold on to that for our future ordinance, if possible, and continue. I know I've spent the last couple of weeks looking around in all my walks around town to try to find mechanical equipment screened or otherwise to see some good, bad, and the ugly. Commissioner Finch?
Yeah, so there's a couple instances where the zoning changes mid-block, and I was wondering what happens to the UR, the higher-density zone parcels that are mid-block next to the UR3s? Do they also benefit from a zero-side yard setback, or would they have a five-foot setback?
The, let's see. I think they would have the five-foot setback. Higher-density zones, so we've got the UR3 has a five-foot, the UR4 would not within Metro Everett. Neighborhood business would have a five-foot, but then the mixed urban zone, our highest-density zone, would not have an interior setback. So it would be the UR3 and the UR4. Is that the transition you're looking at?
Yes.
So yeah, in that case, the UR3 would be setback five feet from the lot line, but its neighbor would, could be right up to the lot line.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Yorick, were you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners with questions or comments? All right, well, we can come back if any do arise, but let's go to any citizen comments. Anybody here from the public who was wishing to address the commission on these matters? Now would be the time to do it. I don't know. Kathy, has anybody signed up in advance?
Nobody signed up in advance, but I do have three guests tonight.
Yeah, so guess, if you, I guess I see, yeah. Maybe let's just do this. If we have three, if you are wishing to address us, maybe go ahead and unmute yourself and just identify yourself, and we can kind of sort through it, I think. So that would be the time.
So this is Ishmael Mohammed.
Mr. Mohammed, hi. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have sent in my comments that you must have received it. I would also like to know, what are the other amendments which are, which have been covered during the last, after the rethink was implemented? What are the other lists, what are the other amendments that will be coming in? And what is the plan in between? Because this process may take a long time, and that would delay the development process from the developers. So how are we going to address in between this time? You know, it might take a few months, maybe. So are we going to withhold or consider some projects with modifications? Or what is the plan for that?
Yeah. We do have a list of, I don't know, Becky, if you know what the number is up to, it's 60 or 80. A lot of them are not major issues. It's just its consistency and clarity. This five-foot setback has been identified as one that was holding up some development that had an expectation for the zero-foot setback, as you'll hear, I think, with one of the next commenters here. We do have a few tools. We're working as fast as we can to clean those up and work through them, balancing it with a lot of other work that we have on our plates. We have a couple of tools to work around it. Modifications are one. There are a lot of aspects of the development regulations that can be modified administratively, and where there's an ability to modify that overlaps a shortcoming in code. We can go ahead and do that. It adds a little bit of process. It adds a little bit of time, and so it's not ideal, but it is a workaround. I think this five-foot setback is an example of one where we did not have authority for administrative modifications, and so we wanted to bring it quickly. I guess, yeah, that's the two-part answer. We're going as fast as we can, and where we have the ability to modify or interpret or issue. There was another one earlier this year. We issued a planning director interpretation clarifying some unclear provisions on how to measure maximum building height, and that was able to work as a stopgap measure. And then we will go back and take that planning director interpretation and apply it to code, to fix it in the code, because that's always usually preferable to having a planning director interpretation by rule. And then, other than that, we're just working as fast as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Yorick, perhaps before we move on, I feel like I have not had a chance to see the email that Mr. Mohammed sent. Would you be able to, Yorick, maybe summarize that for us? I feel like we should consider it and hear it before we do vote on the resolution.
It is brief enough. I can just go ahead and read it. Hello, Becky. I would like to submit my comments and appreciation for taking this and several other code amendments, which were an unintended outcome of rethink zoning. We have five properties in Metro Everett affected by the new setback requirements, and this amendment will help us in developing these properties with maximum density. The properties affected are 2809 California, 3308 Rockefeller, 3310 Rockefeller, 3314 Rockefeller, and 3326 Rockefeller. I am in total support of this revision. Thanks. And for folks listening out there, note when you send a comment letter like that, I hope that was appropriate to share with the planning commission. We do interpret that comments going to a project manager on an ordinance that's before the planning commissioner are fair game to share with the planning commission. So thank you again for your verbal and written comments, Mr. Mohammed.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Yorick. Okay, I think we do have at least one other guest who wanted to speak tonight. So if you'd want to go ahead and unmute yourself, if that's *6, and introduce yourself, and we can hear your comments. You know, we're not hearing if you're trying, if you are trying, I think, is it the phone number ending in 46, that's two digits? Maybe while waiting, is there anybody else, any other members of the public here tonight to speak on this matter? Yorick, did you recognize, is that what number we're looking at here?
I, I heard from Mr. Zlab at the beginning of the meeting indicated that he wanted to speak to the commission. I did not see what phone number he was, and that's that *6. So if Joe or anyone else sits on the phone, just hit that *6, and we'll listen for you.
And if I may make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
Thank you. If they are unable to *6, and they do want to speak, they can hang up and call back. That might be easier if it's not working for them.
Okay, that comes from our technical assistant tonight, so good advice.
Sure enough, we've got.
It looks like he just called back, so.
Okay.
Admit him.
Mr. Zlab, is it? Okay.
Hello, this is Joe Zlab. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Hello, we, we can hear you, yes, thank you for your patience.
So my apologies, the star six wasn't working, so I called in on a different line, my apologies there.
Well, we can hear you, and we'd love to hear from you. Go ahead.
So I'll make a real quick statement. Joe's Lab, address for our project, the, the ownership address is 2621 Rockefeller Avenue, Everett Law. And good evening, Planning Commission, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity for speaking. We'll try to keep it brief, because I know everyone's got a busy schedule. So I believe you already have the printed-out written statements, so I don't need to bore you with reading it, you know, to you, but just to give it some context, there's two pictures there on the page. One is a construction picture on the left-hand side where we're nearing completion. We're hoping to get temporary certificate of occupancy, you know, any day now, hopefully within a week. We've already had most of our inspections finished, we think it's a great project. There's a website for prospective renters, it's rocksquareaps for apartments.com, that's And in it, you can see the interiors, you know, we've got quartz countertops, we think it's a great mixture of market rate and then also affordable housing. This qualifies for the MFTE program, that's, you know, been a very successful program in the city of Everett for years now. And, you know, we're happy to be bringing this 30-unit building onto the block. We're planning on bringing two others onto the same block, back under the Metro Everett Code. What we did is, the land we had assembled for the last 20 years, we decided to break it into three phases to, you know, just so that we didn't have such a massive project, but also, you know, it just makes it more manageable from our side as well. We're not, you know, big deep-pocket developers. So anyway, we've got Phase One done, we submitted for Phase Two just a few days after the Metro, I mean, the rethink zoning had been approved. We were not aware that there had been some changes, some landscape changes, and then the zero lot line interior yard setback change happened. And we found out a couple of months later, and it's, it's put us in a spot where we can fit two buildings, but we can't fit our third building because we're losing five feet, and five feet times three buildings is 15 feet, so it basically kills the third building. So, you know, the provision had been there to promote density in this, you know, downtown area, to get, you know, buildings, affordable buildings into the Everett area, and, you know, we're all for that. We would like, you know, to put, put our support behind reinstating that zero lot line at the ground-floor level provision, and just, just for our buildings, they're still going to be landscaping between every building, it's just that little bump out at the front, which is the lobby, and then a little ADA lift area allows us, you know, for better interior circulation. That's the part that goes up to the property line. There's a firewall there, so there's no problems with mechanical issues or anything like that. So anyway, we, we believe the city of Everett is, you know, right to promote density in the downtown core, it's affordable housing, but also market rate, it's a great mixture of the two. We're, we're proud of the project, and we want to build two more. So with, with, I think that's probably enough, but if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, or we'll also be giving tours of the building through our rental agency, hopefully within a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Lab, we appreciate your comments, appreciate you being here tonight. Any other, I, I think I know the answer to this, but are there any other guests wanting to address us further on this matter? Go ahead and unmute yourself now, if you do. I think there are no, no, none further. Let me kick it back to any Commissioners, if there've been any additional questions that have, have arisen.
Chair Yanisak is the Commissioner Holland. If there's no other additional public testimony, I would recommend that we close the public hearing.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and second that. Becky, you want to go ahead and, Kathy, go ahead and roll call, please, roll call vote.
Commissioner Atkins? Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVera?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Yanisak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have been presented by staff with a proposed resolution, number 21-07. Any Commissioner comment on that?
Chair Yanisak, move to approve Resolution 2107.
Thank you, Commissioner Finch. Do we have a second?
I second that, this is Commissioner McGinn.
Thank you. Kathy, let's go ahead and have a vote.
Chair Yanisak, this is Commissioner Holland. Just, just one typo, it's no big deal, there's, there's, the signature lines on the last page just need to be updated, it's not content-based, I just wanted to let everybody know. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Well, let's make a note of that, thank you. Okay, with that, Kathy, go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVera?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Yanisak?
Yes.
All right, the resolution was adopted. We are done with our, our agenda. Before we close, kick it back to staff, any closing comments?
Thank you all for making your way to the meeting this evening, for a short agenda. Have a happy Thanksgiving, we will see you on December 7th. Good night.
Great. All right, well, thanks, everybody, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.